Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the South Tampa Candidate Forum. I'm Marlon Anderson, the organizer for the event, and the first thing I'd like to do is a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance... Okay, this is the sixth South Tampa Candidate Forum. This time it's co-sponsored by 23 South Tampa neighborhood associations and organizations, which is our highest ever. I think the highest we have before was something like 18. And so, you know, it's a lot that's representing probably 50,000 or more residents, a lot of them of whom vote, all right? Now, the purpose of this event is just to educate the audience here, so they can listen to what these candidates have to say. And again, as I mentioned last time, a lot of you are opinion leaders. You're going to go back to wherever you came from and give your impressions to people that you know, all right? And so, I wanted to thank the candidates for throwing their hats in the ring, and I want to also mention that we have 17 candidates this time. We have all on the road, all up on the stage at once, and it's going to be interesting because we have actually three districts that have no incumbents, so it's going to be pretty much, pretty wide open here. And so, I don't know these, a lot of these candidates. I have some ideas of who I might vote for, but I'm going to wait until I actually listen to this forum before I make up my mind. All right, so, so I want to move on here. So I want to thank Jeff Patterson from News Channel 8, okay? He's our moderator. This is his sixth time as well. Thanks, Jeff. And I wanted to also mention that the video of this entire event will be posted on YouTube, and I'll provide the link as soon as it's available. Also, if anyone is live streaming this event, I ask that you use the hashtag #STCandidateForum. That is @STCandidateForum. All right. So, the other thing we have to do, again, I ask for your patience, because one thing I'd like to do is acknowledge people. This is a volunteer-run and sponsored event. This is all done pretty much on a shoestring, and we make it work as volunteers. And I want to, you know, first of all, thank the neighborhood presidents for helping to promote this event. It looks like we got about 150 people, something like that, tonight. Would you say 150? Which is a pretty good turnout for a city council forum. I don't know how many typically come to these, but it's pretty good. And I also want to, just to acknowledge the neighborhood presidents, because these are pretty rare individuals that will actually take responsibility for their neighborhood. You know, it's like, there's something going on with trees, and potholes, zoning situations, variances, dogs, cats, I mean, you name it. They will, they will get, I was president myself for eight years, but I got all those type of calls, believe me. And so, they are, I'm very grateful to people that do that, because again, sometimes out of a population of 4,000 residents, you might find one person that's willing to do that, and nobody else wants to do it. So, I want to thank them all for that. And so, I'm going to acknowledge that one at a time, it's going to be alphabetical order by association. So the first one I'd like to acknowledge is Jerry Miller from Ballast Point. Jerry's over here. The next one is Chelsea Johnson from Bay Shore Beautiful. Chelsea had another conflict she couldn't make it tonight, but Chelsea is also on the committee that helped to produce this forum. Catherine Durkin of the Bay Shore Condominium Council. Vicky Pallier of Bay Shore Gardens. So Vicky's over here. Vicky's been doing this since 2010, right, Vicky? Since the first ones. Okay, Jerry Frankhauser of Bayside West. Steve Elton of Belmar Shores. Randy Shaw of Colbrith Bayou. Susie Moreland of Colbrith Heights. And Susie also is on the committee to help produce the forum, so thanks for that, Susie. Janice Davis of Davis Islands. Jeff Naturski of Gandy Sun Bay South. Elena Sanchez-Cotes of the GFWC Tampa Women's Club. She's up there in New York right now. Miller Dietrich of Gulfview. There's Miller over there. I have to mention, for Miller, Miller actually flew 200 combat missions in Vietnam. Okay, I got, next is Bruce Clark of Gray Gardens. Gray Gates, sorry, Gray Gates, sorry. All right, next one is Patrick Bailey of New Summer Beautiful. Kim Nigans of Palmasia. Sandra Gugino of Palmasia Pines. Oh, there she is in the back. Okay, Mike McNabb of Palmasia West. There he is over there. Annalise Meyer of Parkland Estates. Kylie Denau of Port Tampa. So she was also on the committee that helped produce the forum. Michelle Gilby of Soho. Tony Pastor of Sunset Park. Okay, Tom Kester of Swan Estates. And Tom Connolly of Virginia Park. That's all the associations. Okay, now, one of the volunteers. Okay, we have a selection committee. We have Vicky Pallier and Jerry Miller, the selection committee. They'll be taking up all your cards and stuff. Jay Lenny, who's a past president of Colbrith Heights, he's our videographer in the back. Does a great job. Mark Schella, owner of Colbrith Heights Photography. Mark's around here somewhere. Okay, there he is. He takes some amazing photos of the mayoral forum, by the way. Oh, it's just fabulous quality. He really, this guy's really good. All right, Wendy Davis of Colbrith Heights, she's a timekeeper. There's Wendy. All right, Sandra Alexander of the GFWC Tampa Women's Club. She's around here somewhere. I think she is, okay. All right, let's see. And then Mike McNabb of Palmasia West, again, he served as usher. He's back in the back there. Okay, Mike, thanks. Susie Moreland of Colbrith Heights, the food planning and so forth for the, for X of both events. So, Susie? Yeah, there you go. And Carrie Costanaco? Did I get that right? Costanaco? I think so. Carrie, not enough Carrie's in here. She was serving the pizza back there. Anyway, Carrie. All right, so I want to also acknowledge the financial contributors. The Sunset Park Homeowners Association was, contributed most of the money, you know, for this hall and all these type of expenses, the pizza and all that. But we also had Bay Shore Beautiful with Chelsea Johnson president. She helped, contributed. So Chelsea, she's not here tonight, but, thank you, Chelsea. And then I'd like to also acknowledge Janice Davis of Davis Islands for the financial contribution. Thank you, Janice, that helps, really does. On the baked goods, I'd like to acknowledge the GFWC Tampa Women's Club. If any of you guys got a chance to sample that, they do this at every forum for free, so, thank you, Women's Club. Appreciate it. All right, and the use of the hall, I'd like to give a special acknowledgement to the St. Mary's Episcopal Day School. We've been using this hall since 2011, and it's, this is a beautiful facility, wouldn't you agree? And the acoustics in here are really nice, you know? It doesn't echo off all the walls. You can actually hear what I'm saying, which is really good. All right, and so, okay, we're just about ready to get started here, because now, because we have so many candidates, in 2012, we had everybody all behind tables, which was really nice. This year, we got 17 candidates that won't fit behind tables, so we had to do rows, which is what we had to do back in 2011, when we had similar numbers. So we kind of split it out, and you can see where there's that gap there, so you can see the people in the back and all that, and we kind of like grouped them by district. And did anybody get to pass, you get the maps? Yeah, we passed out the maps. Yeah, so I printed out 150 of those, so that you could know who these people are, because once they sit down, they're covering up their name, their names, I guess. Kind of hanging from here. But anyway, but here's how this is going to work, okay? We have District 4 and 6, so this is District 4, these three, and then the middle's District 6. We wanted them in the front, because they represent between these two districts, all of South Tampa, okay? We want to get a really good, close look at them, right? Because they're our representatives, right? So we have them up front, and of course, District 6 also represents West Tampa, but anyway. And then, besides that, we have District 1 there, that's where we have five candidates up there, okay? And then we have District 2 over here, on the left, and District 3 on, back there. Those, so 1, 2, and 3 are all citywide, okay? All right, so now, the way this is going to work here is we have one prepared question based upon input on a survey of the various neighborhood presidents, of what was concerning people the most as regards city council. So that is going to get asked, and while all that's going on, we're going to be circulating index cards, and we want to get questions from the audience. So it's going to be 10 questions from the audience, just one from, but the first one's going to all 17. And then, the ones that are from the audience are going to go district by district. So if those of you out there, you know somebody that's in District 2, write down on your index card that this is for District 2, for example, right? And, you know, depending on how many we get for each district, you know, we might have to even reshuffle a couple of them. If we get a lot of District 4s and not enough of some other district, we might change one of them over. But we want to do it to set up, we set it up here so that we have a question, and you can hear all three of them answer that question. And then we move on to the next one, and those two will answer that, another question, so you can compare the candidates on specific questions. So that's, that's our little system. That's the way we've done it before. It works, you know, mathematically and everything else, and you get, you get everybody done. Everybody, and all told, when we're done, each of these 17 candidates will answer three questions. Okay, so at this point, I want to turn over the event to the moderator. So Jeff Patterson of News Channel 8, the event is all yours.
Good evening, everybody. We have a lot of candidates tonight, so I'm going to keep my remarks brief, because we want to hear from our friends, our neighbors, our city council candidates who have taken their time to come out tonight. I do have some ground rules to get through. Each candidate will be allowed to address the audience for one minute for their opening remarks. While the candidates are speaking, they're going to be distributing to you all the index cards, seeking questions from you. And if you'd like to ask questions, please write them out as, you know, easily as you can, and pass them to the aisle. We have ushers who will be here, that will collect those cards, and then they will hand them to our screeners, who will then in turn pass them along to me, and we will follow the procedure that Marlon just lined out. Following the speeches, each question, for each question, the candidate will be allowed one minute to respond. Because of the need to allow everyone to have time, we have Wendy Davis down here, who is going to be keeping a tight ship and holding up that time card for you, and then I will be doing my best to keep you in check. We don't have music, we don't have a hook, but I will, you know, interrupt if I have to. So the overall format, as lined out by Marlon, is that we're going to start with our opening remark, one minute, and we're going to start here with Bill Carlson, and then work our way down, all the way down, and we have wireless mics for each of you. So, Bill.
Good evening, thanks for coming out. I'm Bill Carlson, running for District 4, which is the district that covers most of South Tampa. The three of us are running against each other. The seat now has Harry Cohen, who, as you know, is termed out and running for mayor. Many of you know me already, because I've been involved in community and neighborhood issues, neighborhood issues for more than 14 years. That evolved, that was started in Historic I Department, evolved into what's now called CAFIC on Tampa, and I think about half or more of you have been to CAFIC on Tampa at some point, so you know what that is. But it's a weekly forum where we discuss important issues, in particular neighborhood issues, to try to help make sure that neighborhoods have a voice with the city, county, and other government officials. Recently, the Tampa Times endorsed me, because they said I not only understand the neighborhood issues and local grassroots community issues, but I also have a big vision for Tampa that includes things like making an international city, promoting the arts, promoting historic preservation, civil rights, et cetera. So I look forward to answering more questions and having a dialogue with you going forward. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Sal Gardner Jr., and I'm running for Tampa City Council, District 4. I'm a fifth-generation Tampa native, so I have a lot of family relatives that are still here. I actually have a distant cousin who's on News Channel 8. She spelled her name a little differently to where you could pronounce it, so if you see my billboard or yard signs and think, "How the heck do you say that name?", she lays it out for you. But more about me, I'm a proud alum of Judgment High School. I've been running this campaign actually since March of last year, and most recently became engaged to, like my mother, I play high school alum. And my fiance and I plan on having a large family and growing this family in South Tampa, which is why there's no better time than now for me to be able to run for office and build a better and safer South Tampa for both your family and mine to be able to grow up and prosper in, which is why I'm asking for your vote to be your voice, to be the next city councilman. Again, I'm Sal Gardner Jr., running for Tampa City Council, District 4.
I'm Lee Lowery, your candidate for city council, District 4. A little bit about me, I've been a Tampa homeowner for 23 years. I'm a working, single mom of two teenagers, and I've done a great deal of work over the last 10 years in civic and community activism leadership. So why am I running for city council? Well, as Mayor Bob Luckhorn said just last week at a campaign event, Tampa needs Lee Lowery. Tampa's an amazing place in its history, and we are about to be that city that we dream of. We're on the verge of being the most vibrant and exciting city in the Southeast. I want to help us get there, but I think there's some foundational things that we need to do before we can. I'm committed to quality of life in our neighborhoods, and that means safety. I've been endorsed by the Police Benevolent Association, and I'm the best-equipped candidate to keep our families safe. Secondly, infrastructure. I've been saying, we cannot build a 21st-century city on 19th-century sewers and pipes. We have to update them in our streets and sidewalks. And finally, traffic and transit options. Our citizens need to be able to get where they're going as quickly as possible and safely. So thank you, and I appreciate your vote on March 5th.
Hi, everyone, my name is Guido Maniscalco. I am your Tampa City Council representative for District 6. I was first elected in 2015. I'm born, raised, and educated here in the city of Tampa, and my relationship with this area started actually 30 years ago when I attended Christ the King. My sister, who attended Plank High School later on, and my father, who owns a business right around the corner from here. So I know the community. I've had the honor and the privilege of serving you for the last four years, and I'm here asking for your vote again, as I seek reelection. Some great endorsers that we've received recently, Police, FIRE, the Tampa Bay Times, Legazetta, Equality Florida, the list goes on and on. I love what I do every day, waking up, going to city hall, serving you, listening to you, serving my constituents, because this is our community, this is our home. All politics is local, as has been said before, because what happens locally affects us right away, affects us daily. So, serving you in the city council, I can see the, the effect that we can have, but it's an honor to serve you, and I look forward to speaking to you more this evening and telling you more about myself. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, South Tampa Forum, for having me. I am Wendy Pepe, and I have lived here for 36 years. I have lived in this neighborhood since 1993. I'm a graduate of USF, and I'm married to Mike, and we have three sons. I think everyone here has something to offer to the city, but I think I'm uniquely qualified for District 6. I want to leverage my ability as a businesswoman to take the initiatives that we have currently in place and move them forward, move them back out to the neighborhood. As a council member, I promise, my job is to make sure that we get the best infrastructure and the most efficient infrastructure that we have with these transportation dollars. I am a problem solver. That's what I do in business. I can bring my energy, I can bring my experience, and I can bring a collaborative effort to work with everybody. I love this city, and have my word. I will make sure that District 6 and this city is the best it can be. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Joseph Citro, and I am a New York candidate for Tampa City Council. My experience with the city of Tampa started 16 years ago, when I became part of the Civil Service Board. I then moved on to magistrate for Code Enforcement Board. I am now chair of the Variance Review Board. Like Bill Carlson, we were on the Charter Review Commission together. I have the proud endorsement of the Tampa Bay Times. Ken Huff is with the FIRE Union Local 754, and there's people in this room that have also endorsed me, Ms. Vicky Pallier, Ms. Missy Martin, all Neighborhood Association presidents. I hope to get your endorsement also. My name is Joseph Citro, please visit my website, citroforcitycouncil. Let's put Tampa to work, not only for the city, but for you, the citizens.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Alan Clint Dunne, also Tampa City Council, District 1, citywide. I raised my children in this neighborhood, Belmar Shores. They went to school just down the street to Maverick Coleman and Plant. My son played Little League at the field down the way, on the Dodgers. My daughter played softball, the Red Rocket. I'm embedded in, in, in South Tampa. I've lived in Tampa since 1985, grew up in central Florida, spent over 30 years as an air traffic controller, most of which was at Tampa International, and management. I've had 35 years of experience with managing the budgets, submitting budgets, hiring, firing, training, logistics, equipment procurement. Uniquely qualified to set on, and provide those skills to sit on the city council. I would appreciate your consideration. I understand what it's like to jump out of your car on Neptune, to push a car out of flooded waters as you're going to Publix, and I know what it's like to make a left turn on the West Shore. I've lived it, I feel it, and I appreciate your consideration and your vote. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is David Luce, I'm running for District 1, city council as well. I'm a Tampa native and a USF graduate. I volunteer for, I volunteer for Meals on Wheels, Paint Your Heart, and I sit on the board for Rise, which is a police foundation. So at its core, city council really is the voice of the community, and its job is to ensure there are opportunities there and a safe environment for you to live a productive and happy life. So for me, I, I look at this in three, three major investments, and the first and most important is your family. So let's get, let's get brilliant at the basics here. Let's keep it simple, and it's all about safety. Second's going to be your home. Complex infrastructure comes into this, and smart infrastructure development. And then lastly, it's your business. So business is the foundation for your other two investments. So this includes viable transportation options, as well as a healthy job market. My name is David Luce, District 1, and I hope I can get your vote. Thank you.
I'm Craig Newman, I'm running for District 1, a citywide seat. I've been living in Tampa, South Tampa, since 1960. We moved to Colbrith Avenue and Beach Park. I later moved, my family, to Beach Park on Colbrith Avenue, 5 miles down from the house I grew up in, because I wanted to experience with the, the great neighborhoods that I, I lived in. I'm a retired chiropractor, practicing 37 years, 35 of which was at the Kennedy Boulevard Chiropractic Clinic. For 33 years, I was in leadership throughout my profession, locally, statewide, and nationally. I sit, I sit on the executive ward of the Soho Neighborhood Association, and I'm currently the third-time president of the Victoria Park Homeowners Association. I continue to get back on the board with, as a president, because I get things done. I'm a hands-on kind of guy, no pun intended. I appreciate your consideration.
Good evening. Glad you're still on the floor today. I'm Lord of the Tigo Nation. My name is Walter Smith II. I am a civil and environmental engineer. I have worked for 18 years throughout the city of Tampa. I'm the only candidate here that has actually spent time preparing curriculum and actually training people to go into jobs, the very same jobs that we're concerned with right now throughout the city of Tampa, and making sure that people can get into them. I've been in the trenches for years. I've worked with the R. Latino Commission as a commission. I'm a member of the West Tampa CDC, a member of the West Tampa CR Regent and Advisory Committee. I've dealt with issue of brown property development issues and revitalization for all, for many communities throughout city of Tampa. So I'm most strung into what the needs are of communities. My main thing is to make certain that I am not making decisions for you, but making decisions with you. I understand very well that the issues surrounding the city of Tampa have to be made with you from the standpoint of me understanding that my job does not begin in, in the city of Tampa chambers, but out here with all of you. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, if you would just pass the microphone down this way, we're going to begin on the back row here with John in District 2. John.
Hi, everybody. My name's John Godwin. I'm running for Tampa City Council, because it's a continuation of me dedicating myself to service. I served the men and women in our military, working right up the street at McPhail Air Force Base. The work that I do, the intel work I do saves lives, saves, helps save their lives. I served some of the most neglected and abused children in our region as a foster parent. We've taken 12 foster children into our home, providing them a safe and nurturing environment during the most tumultuous experience in their lives. And I've served all of you and all of Tampa. We have 18 amendments on our ballot this March. Number 16 is one that I brought before, before the Try and Review Board, and it protects people from discrimination, regardless of disability, regardless of age, and regardless of pregnancy. This dedication to service is something I'm going to bring to city council. I have the vision and the knowledge to bring to Tampa what we need to solidify the growth that we have been experiencing and continue that growth, so that serves everybody here in Tampa. I hope to have your vote, your vote and your support. I'm John Godwin, thank you.
Thank you, I'm Charlie Miranda, a current city council member, District 2, seeking reelection. Let me just say that it's an honor to be here today with all of you. I graduated from Thomas Church High School, HCC, and Criminology degree, University of Tampa. When we talk about things and necessities that we really need, we just wrote out a plan last week that was presented to Tampa City Council, and that plan is for your water and wastewater lines. You see, we have many lines and hundreds of miles that were built prior to 1940. The cost to repair both of those lines and expand, have an expansion plan, the Tampa Water Plan, from 120 billion to 140 billion gallons a day capacity, because we have 147 people moving into this area every day. Not too many years ago, 10 years ago, the Tampa was ranked number 35 in the country as place to live, and now it moved up to number 10. We have to be prepared, and that plan's going to cost 3.2 billion. I'm seeking reelection to make sure that every dollar is spent the right way.
South Tampa, I'm not a career politician, and I'm not the status quo. I'm Joe Robinson, a New York candidate for city council, District 2. I'm a licensed professional engineer. I own consulting firm for the past 30 years. I graduated from the University of Iowa. I went to Tampa Catholic High School, and I'm a co-republican in the Hundred Yard Pass at 9E. I understand that you want some to have a listening ear. I want to look at sustainable neighborhoods. I've been in historical preservation with Nucci, David, Smith, John, Gentlemen, and Jan Abel. I stay... I stay in West Tampa. I'm the chair of the West Tampa CRA. So I know about that. I've been a community activist. I've been to City Council. I've been to County Commission. I've been everywhere. You've probably seen me down on TV somewhere. And I need your vote. I need your support. It's time to have an engineer on City Council that never been one. And I'm gonna be that first professional engineer so that I can give fair and reasonable decision, especially when they're splitting lots around here.
Good evening. I feel a little funny saying hi, I'm John Dingfalter, because you know me. Nancy, you, Marlon, you know me because we raised our kids together here in South Tampa. And Vicky, Jerry, you know me because I was president of my Neighborhood Association on Davis Island. And then when Lynn and I got married over here in Palm City, a vice president. Right now, you might see me on the Varian Review Board. Joe Citro and I sit together on the VRB for the last three years. And I did it three years before I went to Tampa City Council. Perhaps most importantly, you know me as your City Councilman for South Tampa for two thousand three to two thousand ten. You know me as the councilman who was well-prepared. You know me as the councilman who asked the tough questions on your behalf. And you know me as the councilman who fought for our neighborhoods, all of our neighborhoods, and will continue to do so if you elect me to City Council, to return to City Council March fifth. I am John Dingfalter. You know me. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Nicholas Flower. So good to be here with you this evening. Thank you so much for having us here to talk about our vision for the City of Tampa and for South Tampa. A little bit about me personally. I live in Tampa Heights with my wife, Caitlin, for six years. We actually graduated from Smith's some number of years ago. And our two small children, Aiden, who is three years old, and Elry, who is one. Professionally, I've worked at the Nasdaq Stock Market in New York and Equity Capital Markets. At American Express in marketing strategy. I currently lead the Florida division of a six-hundred-billion-dollar energy company. And I'm really happy to lead that effort here locally. I'm in this race, quite frankly, because I have noticed an unwillingness on the part of elected officials to act on the biggest issues that our city faces. With the same issues year after year, cycle after cycle. We know what they are. Transportation, housing, education. We do not lack for good ideas. What we lack is good, quality, courageous leadership. That's why I'm running, to be a fresh voice with new perspectives to move the city forward. So thank you for your support. I'll afford to earn it this morning, Mark. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steven Leil. And there's a lot of familiar faces here. But for those that I don't know, I'd like to just share with you the qualifications I have to run for City Council. And also my vision to move Tampa forward. First, there's a lot of well-qualified candidates on this stage. But I'm the only one currently who proudly serves as a Neighborhood Association President. Meaning I deal with and present solutions for the issues that our neighborhoods have today. Secondly, I humbly serve as our Chair of the City's Budget Advisory Committee. Meaning that I have the experience and the knowledge to hold our city's administration accountable by asking tough questions that will make sure we address the issues that we have today as residents with how we're going to move the city forward in the future. And we're going to move that city forward with a vision that I can present to you now. One that will strengthen and empower our neighborhoods. I'd like to talk to you about that tonight, and hopefully we can. If not, I'll be presenting a plan this week on how we're going to do that. We're gonna improve our infrastructure because it plays issues all over the city. And we're gonna do that through sound fiscal policy. So I ask you, because I know that the citizens of Tampa can achieve more when we work together, to vote Steven Leil for Tampa City Council on March fifth, and let's move Tampa forward together. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Viva. I'm your candidate for Tampa City Council, District Three, Citywide. I grew up in Florida. I've lived in Tampa for over twenty years. I'm a graduate of USF. I did my bachelor's in speech pathology. I have a master's in organizational management. I'm the only candidate here that has actual hands-on work experience on all areas of my platform. I have worked in public schools as speech therapists, providing speech therapy to our children with disabilities. I have worked in law enforcement. I have worked in technology, handling two-hundred-fifty-million-dollar budgets, fixing their compliance and their quality control. I have worked in transportation, in a creation, implementation of a successful transit system which we really need now in our city. And I have worked in, sorry, and I've worked in public safety. I'm part of the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Advisory Council. I've been there for six years, served as president. I'm part of the Sheriff's Shooting Review Board. And I look forward to telling you my vision in my closing since my time's up.
Thank you all. Thank you, candidates, very much. And you're adhering to our time constraints here because there are so many of you. We're gonna follow the same format with our opening question. In other words, the same mic passing procedure that you all just executed so well. So here is the first question, and this is for all seventeen of you. All over Tampa, City Council has been repeatedly approving the rezoning of vacant lots for the highest possible density, which in most cases is doing such things as approving apartments and townhouses and dramatically reducing setbacks. If elected, as a member of City Council, will you protect all of the neighborhoods from overgrowth which negatively affects the residents who are already there? Mr. Carlson.
I get the easy question first. First of all, whatever the zoning guidelines are for the properties that are there, I would do my best to protect that. What's happened is this easily gets to become a technical question, but there's some legal case studies. Does anybody remember the city vest issue on De Soto in Bay Shore? A bunch of us fought against that years ago. And then because the city turned it down, they lost five million dollars. And so if it would cost the city a lot of money, we would have to look at it. But what I would do is protect the integrity of the neighborhoods. More importantly, I think we need to look at the neighborhoods and create visioning for them. I would propose that the city create a fund, a granting fund, to spend five or ten thousand dollars per neighborhood to help with visioning. Right now, Hyde Park is going through a visioning exercise that they're paying for themselves. But with a visioning exercise, we would know what the neighborhoods want. And with the new offered transportation money, we can build sidewalks, pedestrian, friendly areas. And with the new Tree Something Say Something Agreement, we can also protect our tree canopy and make sure we build the right kind of trees in the environment for the future. Thank you. Look forward to talking about this more.
I believe there's a strong demand to live in South Tampa. Two great things we have is our location and our education. Therefore, all these apartments and whatnot are popping up because of this demand. One thing we need to fix is definitely the transportation. And the education's not so much City Council. But fix the transportation, some of those things outside of South Tampa so that those won't all want to pile into South Tampa. If we're out of room in South Tampa, all we can do is build up. That's why we need to be able to reach out and help those outside, prevent those from coming in so that we can keep our location and our education valued and keep those strong in South Tampa. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, as I said, I'm committed to our neighborhoods and preserving the quality of those neighborhoods and the character of those neighborhoods. And we do need to, as my opponents mentioned, we need to maximize density in places where it's welcomed, but not in places where it's not. So we need to make sure that our rules are rules that we're adhering to. And if not, we need to figure out why. And in addition, we need to plan for the future. Because part of the reason why we're experiencing some of these issues is that we have not planned well enough for the future. And now we are growing, as one of these guys said, by a hundred people plus a day. And the estimate is by six-hundred thousand by twenty thirty. So we need to be planning ahead and thinking ahead, and that's something I intend to do. Thanks.
Thank you. Before I was elected in two thousand fifteen, I served as the president of my Neighborhood Association. And I've always believed and said that neighborhoods are the building blocks of this community. Having said that, one issue that's come up in my four years on Council are the lot splits. That I know several of you, many of you, have witnessed where somebody takes a home, like a ranch-style nineteen fifty's home, they demolish it. And then by City Council or City Approval, it gets split up into two or three lots. The problem is, our land development code is something that we need to look at because we can't just deny, because our code says whatever. And if we're to deny something and it goes to a judge via a lawsuit, a judge can overturn our decision after we pay these legal fees. But something we need to do in order to protect our neighborhood is looking at these law splits. It's a very controversial thing because, for example, El Prado Boulevard from Bay Shore all the way to Dale Mayberry has changed significantly in the last fifteen years. You have what are called these McMansions, as they use the term. But a house gets split on a big lot, and they build these big mansions, which is now a burden on our infrastructure. So.
Thank you. Again, I believe neighborhoods should be preserved, and the aesthetic should be kept the way they are. Again, we're looking at building. We have over a hundred and fifty people moving to Tampa on a daily basis. That'll put over fifty thousand people moving to our community. So again, there's South Tampa and there's other areas. We also want to protect in our district that is happening in South Hills and that that is happening in West Tampa. I believe we have to unfortunately stick with the codes right now, and that's what is in place. Until I can get into City Council and we can change those codes or the zoning, we can't do anything. We have to abide by what is there. And we have to go by what is in place for those developers. We want our economy to continue to develop, but we want it to do it in a proper way. And we want everybody to live reasonably in the same environment and enjoy what we have.
As part of the Varian Review Board, I've heard cases like this many, many times. I am designated as a community activist, and my community comes first. Whenever we have one lot that has one house and gets changed to one lot with a sixteen-unit condominium, I always have to look at the infrastructure burden that's going to place on our neighborhoods already. Water, sewer, garbage, schools. I would prefer not to see these sort of things. And as we've heard before, let's change the codes. Let's change the zoning. Let's not circumvent it.
One thing's certain is there are, the nicer we make Tampa, the more people are gonna be attracted to move here. We're not building a wall around the city, so we have to come up with a way of accommodating all the people that are coming to the City of Tampa. But we have to conform, again, the single, the highest investment most people have is in their homes, their neighborhoods. I had the pleasure of meeting with Mr. Weaver and his team downtown in his law office today. And one of the things we talked about is consistency. You know, you have to have consistency and predictability. We need to have a good land use ordinance, and we need to stick to it. Because people, when they buy a house, when they make that investment, they have an expectation in the neighborhood. So we need to make sure that we have consistency. But we also need to find ways to be able to, again, find ways to be able to accommodate all these people to move into our town. There's a concept called urbanism. So we develop urban villages, but we have transition zones, and then we transition to single-family homes. We need to stick to that as part of the two thousand forty plan for the City of Tampa. We need to make sure our land use conforms with the two thousand forty vision.
As a Tampa native, I've lived all over the city and the county. So from New Tampa where I grew up. And I found myself in South Tampa about ten years ago and had such a unique charm to it, how every house is different, every neighborhood has a different feel to it. It's really appealed to me, and I've decided that I'm gonna stay in the South Tampa area. And if I'm gonna stick true with my principles as City Council is the voice of the community, we have to go by what the community is. So with the land use review, we'll definitely need to review that for the community. And it is fair. We know we are growing. We're gonna have to approach that. But we can do that in incremental changes. It doesn't have to happen all at once or radical changes, as we're seeing in some of our historic districts.
As I said, I've lived in South Tampa for a very, very long time. And when I look around and I start seeing these different homes, townhomes, being put in and using the entire lot. So it does more than just the infrastructure. It also takes away our green space. And when you start taking that away and we continue to follow, I'm gonna use the term the master plan to get Tampa ready for the next, till two thousand thirty, when we wind up having six-hundred thousand people here. We're gonna have a problem. We're gonna have a problem because we keep on adding. And certain things, I know in the Soho area where I'm on the executive board, we're trying to get a designation similar to what they have in Old Hyde Park. So they can't start not continuing, or can't continue knocking down the buildings and putting new townhomes and quadplexes. That seems to be a problem. So we do need to change coding and zoning. And that's one of the things that I would like to look forward to doing when I'm your next City Councilman.
There is no we are going there problem. We have a problem. The issue is that we continue to build in a manner that we have not looked at the infrastructure appropriately. I can't tell you how many times I've worked throughout the City of Tampa, how many times I've actually walked and traversed the areas in South Tampa and actually seen the development that's taking place with no real infrastructural plan. I've seen stormwater back up and light rains because we know that yes, we have climate change issues. We're not developed based upon that. We have stormwater issues that are critical right now. Now, when we talk about the issue of walkability, that's another issue. We have to look at our zoning plans with regard to that. And we have to make certain that we are working with the people to make a determination about what works well for this community. You do not want a community like in West Tampa where you have a look, a culture that has been diminished. You look up one day, you have houses, next day you look at condos, and guess what? The community doesn't look the same. We don't need that type of development taking place in Tampa. No more rubber stamping. Let's take control of Tampa, you and me.
Thanks. We're gonna come back here on District Two candidates, starting with John again.
I'm really proud to be coming before you all as the candidate with the most robust understanding of zoning in our city. This is something that we really need to be addressing. And we needed to be addressing it from twenty years ago. Unfortunately, you all have been receiving a lot of exemptions, a lot of exceptions being passed from our City Council, where things are passed through to be done with lots that didn't have to be done. First, we need to fix our City Council to address that. Second, we do need to address what is going on with our city. We need to address our zoning. What we need to do is look at our impact fees. Right now, our impact fees, the fees that a developer has to pay to build a new unit are lower than St. Pete, lower than Orlando, lower than Miami, lower than any city our size in Florida. We need to be looking where to increase them and strategically increase them in our neighborhoods so that we decentivize developing our neighborhoods and then really be driving that neighborhood closer, or that development closer to our downtown core. That way, the development doesn't have the same sort of impact on our transportation system, the same sort of impact on our stormwater system, the same sort of impact on our schools. I'm John Godwin, looking to have you all's vote.
Thank you. I appreciate the question very much. It's a question where if today we had a zoning hearing, some of you, this side would be for it, maybe. The other side would be against it. Three months later, you come back, the same people, this side would be for it, this side would be against it. It depends what the issue is, how it's presented, and where the lots are. I have never voted to tear in a lot that does not have any divided lots in it. You can check the record. However, I vote for some, and I vote for others, for or against, that I think that it meets the criteria. If this is a lot and fifty percent of the homes are already on fifty-foot lots, I feel compelled to vote for it. I'll tell you why. Because I don't want the rest of the taxpayers to pay for that lawsuit that we just mentioned. You have to do it within the law. It's not what I like, it's what I have to do. And those are the things that I'll look forward. In West Tampa, as mentioned, West Tampa is about thirty percent. Of homes are developed into unjustifiable apartments. And after a long time, I'm forced to get rid of that. Problem is, I'll continue later. Thank you.
Can you repeat the question since this has been a long time?
Yes, sir. At least I can, yeah. Okay. All over Tampa, City Council has been repeatedly approving the rezoning of vacant lots for the highest possible density, which in most cases is doing such things as approving apartments and townhomes and dramatically reducing setbacks. If elected, how as a member of City Council will you protect all of the neighborhoods from overgrowth which negatively affects the residents who are already there?
First of all, I wish our City Council approved anything. So if somebody on City Council, that's dead, that's baby. Joe Robinson's a licensed professional expert. I've been involved in zoning hearings. I've been involved with nineteen ninety-four Tampa Conference of Plan. I sat on the twenty-ten Charter Review Commission. So I understand neighborhoods. That's why one of my things is sustainable neighborhoods. I don't want to disrupt any neighborhood. I'm willing to take a risk to save a neighborhood on a loss of using intelligence, using engineering skill and judgment, not just willy-nilly special interests. When you go to City Council, you find there's a lot of special interest money that gets spent to get votes paid. And the neighborhood gets there, and everybody gets the set. And then everybody goes home and they're mad. Well, you got a chance now. You got a chance to break, to vote for a new face. Someone that's an engineer, that understands zoning, that understands land use, and can advocate for you to have that change. No, I wouldn't vote to split a lot up if it's not legal to do so. No, I wouldn't take special interest money to do so. But I need you to vote to get there.
Good evening. Thanks for hanging in there through this one. You know, I think the key is neighborhood empowerment. When I was on City Council, two thousand three to two thousand ten, I created an organization that was called NEST, Neighborhood Empowerment in South Tampa. And what we did was we met on Saturday mornings. I organized it, I brought the donuts and the coffee. But more importantly, I invited neighborhoods. the neighborhoods. Vicki, Vicki would come, Jerry would come, Marlon would come, anybody who was interested in empowering neighborhoods would show up. And what I would do is I would bring in department heads, I would bring in planners, I would bring in attorneys, because it's, the key to make council making smart decisions is to be able to have competent substantial evidence presented to us. That's the key. And where does that evidence come from? When you want to fight something, like my cell phone tower lady's back there, we work together, okay, to, to say, what do you, what kind of evidence does council need to hear? And, and with that neighborhood empowerment, they presented a better case that was defendable in court, and that's the way we did it then, that's the way I'll do it again, except this time I'll expand it citywide, it'll be neighborhood, I don't know, something empowerment citywide. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. We do have to follow the law, that is absolutely certain. But what I'm hearing, and I think everyone can agree, whether we're the first one to answer the question or the last ones, that we have to revisit what the city is looking at when it evaluates these opportunities. One of the things I've heard running citywide, whether it's South of Gandy, all the way up to Sentinel Heights and New Tampa, is that everyone wants their neighborhood to be lightly remembered. You move there for a reason, you want it to look and feel like that. So I'm, I'm, I'm really focused on making sure that we do that. Going to neighborhood association meetings like this is a good opportunity for us to interact, to hear from you firsthand, and the things that we're hearing about splitting lots in South Tampa is not unique to South Tampa, it exists all over the city. I live in Tampa Heights, I've lived in Sentinel Heights as well, and of course, in a historic overlay district, there are some exceptions, but there are always opportunities for us to revisit that, and I hope that we'll stay engaged just beyond this election, so that when we do revisit the land use ordinances, that we can have the same dialogue and change those things.
It's hard to think of this far down the line, I'm going to have a unique answer for you, but John's right, neighborhood empowerment, that's why the cornerstone of my campaigning is strengthening and empowering our neighborhoods. And how do we do that? Well, the first thing we need to do is make sure that our Neighborhood Empowerment Department has the employees and staff to support our communities. Six, you know, back under Aioria, we had six employees who did that, we went to four, to three, we have one, she's retiring next month, and there's no plan to backfill. I worked with our mayoral candidates to get a commitment to reinvest in that department. That's important, because I feel that there's four people in that department, each has a quadrant of the city, each has an expertise, and one of them should be an expert in zoning and code, or be able to put us in touch with the right people who can help that, because many of our neighborhoods don't have that expertise. And so we need to make sure we address that. Secondly, we are going to see density created and more capacity for residents, but it's the city council's authority to make sure we improve our infrastructure proactively so that we're not seeing impacts from congestion and burden on our, on the capacity of our systems. And that's what we need to do, is empower our neighborhoods and make sure we have the infrastructure to do so.
As a Realtor, it's all about location, location, location. And I understand zoning, and I understand the land use laws that we have. And it's very important that, number one, we enforce the codes. We don't make exceptions. We have caps on areas, so there is not overpopulated high density with all things that you don't need. Right now, Bay Shore is going to have two condominiums built on Bay Shore and one on Gandy. That's going to affect your transportation, that's going to impact your schools, that is going to impact your businesses, and you don't need that. We need to diversify the neighborhoods into what they need in the particular area. Also, we need to respect what they want, because for example, a few weeks ago, Sentinel Heights Vision Plan was not passed by what they wanted as core city council, and city council voted against something built on a lot that was going to impact their vision plan and not be part of what they wanted, but the city council still voted for it. So we need to respect existing vision plans, and we need to create vision plans that really work and move on with that. Thank you.
Thank you. And so now the fun part begins for me, because I've got to stay on my toes here. We're going to move to the questions that you've submitted, and our selection committee has picked, and we're going to do this by district. Right now, I feel a little bit like I'm back on the high school track team, and Bill Carlson is the second leg of the mile relay, because I keep passing him the baton. I will let you know which question is for which district, and the first question here is for all of the District Four candidates, and we're going to follow the same format to begin with. We're going to go from Mr. Carlson on down, and then we will have a separate question for the district, six candidates, and so on. So I'll let you know that this first question is for District One. Right now, Tallahassee has control in many ways over city councils. In other words, you can't even discuss something, you can't bring it up without being fined or have the threat of being kicked out of office. Would you be in favor of challenging Tallahassee's preemption of home rule in regard to local ordinances? I'm sorry, that's, that is District Four, that's my point. Question one, District Four.
One of the, one of the issues that you're referring to is, is there anybody here from Moms Demand Action? Yeah. We've had the Moms Demand Action and also the students protesting gun violence come to Capitol of Tampa several times. I think the, one of the issues in particular is that Tallahassee will not allow city councils to even discuss gun issues, or you can, you can get, I think, a five thousand dollar fine. But you all who are interested in that issue already know that, that, that I've helped provide a flat platform to discuss it, and will continue to do that. City can lobby Tallahassee, and, and as individuals and with activists in the community, we can lobby Tallahassee. But on other issues too, there should be a lot of local control, depends on the issue. Some issues should be statewide, so that you don't go from city to city and have to change all the rules. Like banning cellphone usage is something that Jack in Toledo has pushed. That should be a statewide issue if it goes through, not city by city. You don't want to have your cellphone in one city and have to put it down on the next.
To answer the question, short, I would absolutely challenge Tallahassee. I'm actually in a family business, and we distribute throughout the state of Florida, from Tallahassee down to Miami. And it's something when doing this, is you go around the state, you find out how diverse and different. Tallahassee's almost like Lower Alabama, and then over in Miami is a completely different area. The point is, it's very diverse, and, and the local city should have more control. Tallahassee can't have control, and it should be diversified, and more power should be given locally, and less from Tallahassee, who's four or five hours away.
Yeah, I agree with my opponents, Tallahassee should be Tallahassee, and we should be Tampa, and that's how it should be and how it's set up to be. That said, I have a great relationship with a lot of people in Tallahassee, because I was volunteer advocate for a lot of issues, mostly regarding women and children, as the State Public Affairs Chair of the Junior Leagues of Florida. So I have a great relationship with them, but I was very carted in this last session to see some of that start to back off, and I hope that that's the case continuing on, because nobody knows, you know, just even citywide, the entire city doesn't know, that that'll be our job to advocate for you all with our mayor, and there, all the way down to Tallahassee to Tampa, that there's no way that Tallahassee knows better than Tampa knows Tampa.
Okay. The next question is for our District Six candidates, both of you. For those of you who are not African-American, are you willing to hire and commit to hire some, an aide from East Tampa?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. I'm going to read it just as it is. For those of you who are not African-American or from East Tampa, are you willing to commit to hiring an aide who is from East Tampa?
Well, I've had my legislative aide for four years, and she's, she's wonderful. I mean, I couldn't ask for anybody better. She's wonderful with responding, constituent services, going out into the district. I mean, I don't want to fire her, she's done a great job. But if, if the position were available, I'd hire the most qualified. One example, the former legislative aide for the representative from East Tampa, name was Cedric, Cedric McRae, he moved to Baltimore recently for another job, and a great opportunity. If I had the position available and he were available, I'd hire him just like that. So that's, that's the answer. Thank you.
Well, I don't have an aide yet, so yes, I have a job opening. But that being said, of course, why wouldn't I? If you're qualified and you can do the job, I don't care of your race, your gender, or anything. You are part of inclusion, and you're part of everything. If you are qualified, the job, yes, I will hire you.
All right. This next question is for our District One candidates. Let's see. Your thoughts on the ways to preserve trees while allowing owners to have the ability to develop their property? Support the need to license pruning branches of grand trees? Do you support the, do you support the ability of owners to prune grand trees? So it's a two-parter, I guess.
Jeff, thank you for that tough question.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
As there are some people in the audience here that have seen me in various review before, yes, within reason. And there's new proposed tree ordinance that Ms. Duncan, Kathy Beck, Ms. Mora, Ms. Johnson, and several other community leaders have come up with. And this new proposed tree ordinance is the most scientific tree ordinance in America, and it's also the most legal binding tree ordinance in America. And I believe city council has just sent it on to planning. I really like this ordinance, but in answer to your question, within reason, yes, I would like to, to have the homeowners have the ability to prune their trees, not remove.
Earlier, I was talking to David, who's become a good friend of mine in this race, and as you can probably hear in my voice, I've got a lot of allergies going on, so right now I may be a little prejudiced, so I'm kind of willing to cut down all of the old trees. But, but that's a joke. Any reporters in the room, that's a joke. But, you know, I, it is, it is a balance. Our tree canopy, our urban tree canopy is really part of our neighborhoods, the tree canopy is part of what makes Tampa Tampa, it's part of our charm, it's part of our character, it's part of who we are. It's also part of our environment. Some of these large trees absorb a lot of water storm during the storms, they, they provide natural habitat. I'm also an individual personal property rights person, so again, within reason, I think to do tree ordinance is a step in the right direction, but we have to be able to strike that balance, so between personal property and individual property rights and protecting our tree canopy.
Yeah. I'm falling right in line, so when I look outside my office window and I see all the tree canopies, it's absolutely beautiful, and it definitely gives Tampa that character look that we all really enjoy, instead of the concrete jungle. I do support a variance, again, with degree, I don't want you cutting down trees all the way, but it's your personal property, and if it's making it best for your personal property and the value of your home, I am all right with that. Again, within limits, not going to cut the trees down, so yes, to answer that question.
I'd have to agree with you. My colleagues, I am very interested in trees. I sat down with Kathy Beck for an hour and a half, going over the findings of the University of South Florida and the University of Florida about trees. And she said to me, you are the first candidate to sit down in my office to go over trees. I am thrilled to death that you're here. And we discussed the trees, and watching and seeing how the canopies go changes when they go in and they wipe out the entire, all the trees on lots, and then later, instead of putting the trees back, they give, pay money out, so it goes to, from a tree farm, and the trees don't go where they're supposed to go. I like trees so much, I have my office on Kennedy Boulevard, has two grand dogs that totally envelop the roof. You cannot see from the air that my office building. But I, I have trimmed the way it's supposed to be done, and I have permits when I do it, but I think it's very, very important that we maintain our canopy and do whatever it takes.
You know, I would drive from East Tampa, West Tampa, and then come down this area on Swan. And I drive here for inspiration. I drive here for inspiration, because I've been all over the world, lived in Republic of South Africa, and I've seen tree canopies much like what I see in Swan, in Park Town in South Africa, reminds me so much of it. But let me tell you, when I, when, when I drive through here and I see, I've seen some of the issues, because I started out in business in home inspections, and I have to tell people, listen, you got to cut this back at least four feet away from your house. And that's, that's tough on a lot of people, because they want to preserve the canopies. And as a scientist, one who teaches science, middle school science, I can tell you right now, that it's important for me to teach the children, as I would teach adults, the same thing. We have to have the perfect balance of our environment with regard to building and construction in our environment. Frank Lloyd Wright lived around here, and he's one of my favorite people, one of my favorite architects. And I admire what you've done here in South Tampa. We want to see the same, same type of thing in other communities as well. So we want to have a good balance between what we have, and make sure that within reason we can cut back and protect our homes as well.
Pretty good. This next question is for our District Two candidates, we're going to follow the same format, going left to right, and then the second question for all of you, we're going to go crazy and go right to left. So District Two. Our city of Tampa, Tampa revised its noise ordinance approximately two years ago. DJs, bands, CDs, and other sources of amplified sound are disturbing residents living near bars, restaurants, and similar establishments. Noise ordinance is not enforced for a variety of reasons. Complaint calls are a low priority. Too much ambiguity between residents and law enforcement of what is considered loud noise and plain the audible. Five-minute warnings are not consistently documented. Residents' advocate only solution is to eliminate all outdoor amplification between ten, ten PM and seven AM. Channel District Downtown and Ebor are exempt because of their special designation. Do you support this?
My wife is sitting in the audience, looking at me knowingly. She, she told me right beforehand, be sure to practice your noise ordinance answers. So she's, she's ready to elbow me as soon as I get off stage. But yeah, this is an important part of, of us realizing how we can protect our neighborhoods and guiding development to where it is most appropriate in our city. So right now, when you have a nightclub popping up on Howard or in Hyde Park, that is not the ideal location. What, that location should be in our urban core. And a lot of that can be done with comprehensive rezoning and with incentive packages through our impact fees, through our density bonus system. So a lot of this is how do we better tailor where, where these establishments are located? But we can also, we can look better at working with our police department so that they understand what, what is too loud? With, what are the times that we need to be cutting down on this? And this is something that I hear time and time again, not just here in South Tampa, but also really in East Tampa, and it's something that we need to be sitting down and working with our police department to, to provide training in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Regarding the north, noise ordinance and barking dogs are really the same ones, because when the police arrive, they also have to witness and hear it. And it's very difficult, he can leave, or she can leave, the officers, and right away it's starting to back up again. I have followed council member Capin, who very, very rigidly said, we don't want loud music after eleven o'clock. And the first thing we do when we have alcohol zoning is we ask, do you have amplified music? And the answer is nay. If it's yay, at what time are you going to finish? And they say by eleven o'clock, it's usually acceptable. But if they say nay, it's usually not acceptable. So I can only speak for myself, but other council members that sit there have been very diligently to make sure that the noise must not go beyond eleven o'clock. We've asked that many, many times, now whether it goes on and the police come and they don't hear it, that's another question we have to resolve.
Once again, Joe Robinson, I haven't voted on anything on city council, but I want to get the opportunity as an engineer. You know, when you're talking about loud, it's relative. Some people think loud is that you got an A scale, B scale, and a D, B, A, C scale. So you got to understand that on city council. No, I'm not going to amplify music outdoors, that's the only West Tampa, just boom, boom, boom. You know, and it disturbs you, you can't go to sleep. I've been a victim staying next door to that. You call the police, they come out, they say, oh, well, turn it down, and they leave. The police don't have the necessary training or the equipment to determine what the noise level is. You know, if we had equipment that was, that was, that we could get to determine the noise we could. So the only way to deal with it is outdoors, noise, and set a time for it, because everything has a limit. And belatedly, if you've been used to loud noises, you cannot get to sleep and not be able to get to work, the children and everybody else are tired the next day. So I don't support loud amplified music outdoors.
Thank you. All right. This next question is for our District Three candidates, and we're going to begin with John here. Currently, city of Tampa codes limit short-term rentals for a dwelling to a minimum of seven days. They also require owners of residential rental units to register each unit, and addresses enforcement actions that are available. How will you empower the code enforcement division to actually carry out its responsibilities with respect to violations of short-term rentals for those offered, such as Airbnb and others?
Well, first off, I support that completely. The Airbnb concept is, is a good one, but people can't be allowed to abuse it. Our neighborhoods have to be protected from that sort of thing. In terms of code enforcement... In terms of, uh, code enforcement, I think part of that starts in the budget. Um, they have to have adequate numbers of officers to be able to go out and, and do that. And if we need to change the code to, to strengthen that enforcement, I think we should. As I mentioned earlier, I sat on City Council, uh, for, for eight years, I passed, uh, seven billion dollar budgets. I understand the budget process, and if the mayor doesn't offer us something like that to, as Stephen mentioned, to strengthen neighborhood enforcement, to strengthen neighborhood empowerment, to strengthen code enforcement, then four of us city councilmen will do it for them, for that mayor, because we can. We have the power to control the budget, and we can play, put that money where it belongs. Thank you.
It's a very good question. As one of the few millennials on the stage, uh, we know that times have changed a lot, right? So the model Airbnb is, um, is, is not unique. And while people use Florida to vacation, they come here for, uh, one part of the year, and they go back somewhere else, it's important that we protect our neighborhoods, uh, whoever asks that question. Uh, I think it's really important that we update, uh, our codes to reflect that change. Uh, so I would like to look at that, I'm sure other folks who are running, uh, would like to look at that as well. Uh, the second piece is, I think that one of the concerns, uh, and the reason why that question was asked is because, quite frankly, you really don't want to transient nature to your neighborhood. Uh, so it's important that we do that, and we can't certainly, you know, keep people from, from renting out their houses, because we really can't, uh, we really can't, uh, see who's doing that. We can certainly change the code and look at that, and I think we should look at that, probably in the near future, we don't think. Good.
You know, I believe that there's a lot of things that have changed. When we think about transportation, we have Uber, we have Lyft, when we think about the rental market, we now have Airbnb. And it takes young, innovative professionals who understand those markets to understand how we need to write up the code and make sure that we address it appropriately. But more importantly, we need to, as we talked about with even the, the noise ordinance, we need to enforce that code. And we don't currently do that within code enforcement. We're very understaffed, so we work reactively rather than proactively. So we need to make sure that we invest in that neighborhood empowerment department, which incorporates both our neighborhood relations as well as code enforcement. And then secondly, we need to make sure that they have the tools and resources to be successful, and that they work appropriately with the neighborhood associations, which will strengthen and empower, as I'm, if I'm elected to City Council. Because those neighborhood associations know where those Airbnbs are. They know where we're having code problems. They know where those issues are, and can speak for their neighborhood to address the priorities by reaching out to their correct directors and their city council member to get things done and move Tampa forward.
We can't enforce our codes if we don't have the, the amount of officers we need to go and enforce them. And we can't, uh, know who's having Airbnb in their homes because it's all on the internet. And so what we need to do is like what a few of my colleagues, um, colleagues have said, is we have to do, uh, an association. We have to either register if you want to be an Airbnb, we have to come up with innovative ways to get people on board, we have to work with the community, we have to work with the neighborhood to find out what percentage is actually, uh, this impacts throughout the city. And then we have to think of creative ways and how to get everyone to comply by our codes and, and educate them on what they are. So it is a mass, uh, production, you can say, that doesn't involve one step. It's multiple steps to get to that goal, and that, these are just a few ways we can get there.
Very good. All right, so, um, this time, we have a question for District Four, and like I said, we're going crazy, we're going right to left, so we're gonna start with Lee. Um, infrastructure. Why issue would you like to see ordinances that everyone wants infrastructure improvements, but what are your priorities for infrastructure improvements?
Uh, well, that's a really obvious one. So I've been in this race since early January, and within the first two weeks of my candidacy, two water mains broke. The one downtown that shut down downtown, and then there was one on Howard a week later. Uh, so we clearly need to look at that. Uh, we have a revenue stream coming online in '21, I believe, that will give us some capacity to do that. But we, it, it becomes a safety issue, it becomes a, a transportation issue, and again, you know, I'd like to harp on this, but we can't build the city we want on this infrastructure. It's crumbling underneath us. Um, so I, that is a hundred percent what I would do. Thank you.
Relating this to South Tampa, I think a couple of key things are very outdated and old in South Tampa that we need to renew is our sidewalks and our streetlights. I truly believe that if we build the right sidewalks and safe sidewalks and more streetlights, it'll bring the neighborhood out of its house to, to almost make it more vibrant neighborhood and, and able to help pay to pay, or a Manhattan, or even South of Gandhi, uh...
Let's see, why don't you come on up to the podium?
I feel special, man. Um, and I'll just conclude it actually, uh, back to the sidewalks and streetlights, I truly believe that it's needed to bring this vibrant neighborhood in order to have local businesses and shops open at some of these streets that have so much potential, but lack it because our, our local neighbors don't feel safe to travel these streets. That's why we need to fix our transportation, that's why we need to fix our streetlights and our sidewalks.
So I agree on the other issues, we need to look at storm, there's a stormwater tax that's fixing some of the stormwater problems, and they will be continuing. We also need to fix sidewalks. One of the issues that we're not really facing yet is that we have seen a little rise, if you all have seen the maps, um, half of South Tampa at a certain point in the future will be covered with water. And so we need to start thinking about what we're gonna do related to that. I asked someone from NOAA over in St. Pete, what could we do? And one of the things that we could do without building giant seawalls is to maybe rebuild the mangroves along the waterfront, especially in the areas around McHale. So we need to look creatively and use science to look at that. The other thing is now we have all for transportation, and that not only gives us sidewalk funding, but it also gives us the opportunity to build a robust transit system. And, uh, the good thing is that all for transportation activists did not give us a set plan, so we get to spend the next, uh, few months deciding what that plan will be, and I look forward to engaging you all in a robust discussion about what form of transit should we have and how should we, uh, spend the money in the, in the way that the residents most would like it spent. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. This next question is gonna be for you, um, and so we're gonna, uh, try to ask you guys to keep coming up here unless somebody has a bunch of double A batters. Um, so, I guess I think that's what the problem is. What are your plans to eliminate systematic poverty in Tampa? Also, how would you address affordable housing?
So this is a really good question and a really big issue in Tampa, not necessarily in South Tampa, because of where we are. But moving forward, there is a vision that the mayor had, which is called the West River. The West River is what he didn't get to complete as one of his goals. We sat down last week and we talked about it. We want to create what we have on the East River, where we have the Riverwalk, and continue that on the West River. So what will happen is, over by Blake High School, they have knocked down all that public housing. I didn't touch anything. It's true. They have knocked down all the public housing that was there. And there's approximately in that about a hundred and forty acres that will be developed with affordable housing, with subsidized housing, to allow us to build up that area, but actually make it a beautiful area that people will want to live to, and actually bring it to the school and bring it back to the river, so everyone there can enjoy what we're enjoying currently.
In regards to affordable and attainable housing, uh, because the word is attainable, uh, an idea that I've heard and that we've discussed briefly on City Council, uh, is the shipping container homes, if you've heard or seen them, the tiny houses that are popping up. Uh, but also, the city of Tampa has so many vacant lots that are not on the tax rules that are owned by the city of Tampa. The issue is the cost of land within the city of Tampa. Why do so many people that live, that, I'm sorry, that work here have to live outside the city limits and spend more money commuting here? Uh, one idea would be the, uh, look at those vacant lots, look at the Land Development Code, and see about building those container homes, those tiny house, uh, tiny house communities to offer people, uh, a more affordable option. A hundred eighty thousand, two hundred thousand dollars is not an affordable option. A shipping container home, you can build for eighty thousand, a hundred thousand, a hundred and five thousand by the different prices that I've seen. And that's more realistic to somebody that's out of college or a first job, or struggling, or trying to get out of an apartment and into homeownership. And that's something that we could look at, at doing.
We're working on the microphone thing. All right, so we are gonna, um, ask Mr. Smith, he'll be coming up for this next question, and we'll work our way down to Josu Taronian. Um, and this goes back to the first question, where we asked you about the Tampa City Council repeatedly approving rezoning vacant lots. The question says, regarding the first question, most or all of you said, change the code. How specifically would you change the code? So this goes, this refers back to our first question, where we asked all of you about Tampa City Council repeatedly approving rezoning vacant light lots the highest possible density. And the questioner says, regarding the first question, most or all of you said that change the codes. How specifically would you change the code?
Let me just be clear, there is no silver bullet for this. Okay? Everybody has an idea of how they would change the code. We have to be very, very clear that there are situation by situation, uh, concepts that have to be taken into account. I will be wrong to tell you that I have that answer. But the answer is, whatever it is that the community wants, that's within reason and within the rules and regulations, acceptable for everybody within that community. Again, I go back to the issue, that we have to have more walkable communities, we have to make certain that our communities make sense and that they're recognizable after any type of development takes place. We must not allow rubber stamping of our communities in terms of development. We have to make certain that we are, that we are developing in order to preserve the history and culture of communities that are there. Again, I say you, I, you know, it's gonna take some amount of engagement to communities to, to determine what we're going to do and how we have to change these codes effectively.
Walter is correct. Everything has to be taken based on what is happening with each individual lot. I had a lot that was split in Beach Park on Cobreth Avenue. It was a large lot, and it worked out very well for us. But coding has to be moved forward to things that are changing in, in every community. I don't like the idea of them building, uh, floorplexes and taking up the entire lot and using all the green space. It is not good for us, it's not good for the environment. We should be building using sustainable structures and that are environmentally friendly. And I think our coding should reflect that for the future. The coding is some, oh, we need to change it. We don't have to figure out what all the, what can be done, what we have to do. We can ask other cities that have used it, that have to change their codes. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. So I think it's very important for us to go over that with a fine-tooth comb and figure out what we can do that works for us.
Yeah, and, uh, I agree, it's, it's definitely gonna be a partnership with the community and each neighborhood of theirselves, because every neighborhood's gonna be a little bit different in what they want to see and how they want to see the growth. So when it comes to changing the code, it's gonna be a partnership with one-on-one, and we move from there.
Is anybody, is, how many people in this room are familiar with Envision Tampa? Does anybody? And then the Hillsborough 2040 Plan, or the concept of urbanism? So when you hear a lot of people talk about this, you know, they're, they're, you're right, and maybe in these single-family neighborhoods with the, our zoning, it's totally inappropriate to do some of these things, but we have to have a master plan for the entire city of Tampa. We're running, especially in this district, this is a citywide district, we have a responsibility for the entire community. So what we're looking for is a master plan, it's not one size that fits Sunset Park or Beach Park, but it's someplace that fits Sulphur Springs. And every neighborhood that consists in the city, with urbanism, we will have, which I think I talked about in the first answer, we will have an urban core with transition zones, and then we transition to single-family housing. I want to protect the neighborhoods because that is so distinctively Tampa. I love the neighborhoods in Tampa. If you watch the video, my introduction video, online, you'll find that's a big part of my platform. So yeah, it's urbanism, it's our, our Hillsborough 2040 Plan and Envision Tampa, let's make our land use conform to that.
Oscar Wilde had a great quote, and I'll paraphrase it. There are two great tragedies in life. Number one is asking for something and not receiving it. Number two is asking for something and receiving it. Ladies and gentlemen, Tampa has finally received the great next city that we always wanted to be. The problem is how do we manage it? We have great urban core areas, but everybody still wants to move to South Tampa, don't we? I've lived in Hyde Park, I live on Bay Shore Beautiful, and I've seen neighborhoods in South Tampa that have been overcrowded. I would like to see these type of, of homes that are gonna be splitting into an urban environment along Tampa Street, Florida Street, in through Sulphur Springs, and then through parts of East Tampa. South Tampa, in my opinion, deserves more than lots splitting and more than putting sixteen units on one property.
Joe, if you pass the microphone back to me, we'll start down there. Thank you very much. All right, um, this next question is for our District Three candidates, and I believe this refers to when people appear before City Council or even the VRB and other city boards. So how can City Council make citizens feel more welcomed and be respected and give the citizens the same courtesy as paid representatives and hired attorneys?
Well, um, I would say to be more welcomed is to have a diverse city council. Uh, you see the same people over and over again, and if you have a diverse city council, you are more of, you are more of a welcoming, uh, diverse, uh, council. But also, it also starts from beginning. When, if you want an international city, uh, when you get off the airport, you look at Gate One, how many languages is this Gate One translated to? Are we welcoming our tourists? Is it just in Spanish? Do we have German, French, uh, Belgian, whatever? Do we have different languages? Are we welcoming our international folks? Are we welcoming our international businesses to come and spend money here? Our biggest cultural thing we have is Gasparilla. And are we doing anything else? We're a melting pot of diversity and inclusion. So what are we doing with their other cultures? Are we having a Puerto Rican parade? Are we having a Chinese New Year? I mean, these are a lot of things we have to take into consideration if you want to have diversity and inclusion throughout the city of Tampa.
I think it's a great question, because every resident that I know that goes to City Council doesn't go there because they like going to City Council, with the exception of Joe, Joe goes down. All of you, it's, uh, with the exception of Joe, most people are going there because they're fighting something, or they're angry about something, or they're unhappy about something. And earlier I hit on, we need to strengthen and empower our neighborhoods, and we need to do that by investing in our neighborhood relations department and having one person who can provide expertise that relates to code, tree, uh, zoning, the issues that we go in front of City Council for. And if we have somebody that can go there, then people are gonna be heard and respected more when they walk up to the podium, because they're not gonna say, I don't like it because I don't like the way it looks, or I don't like the way it feels in my neighborhood. They'll go there and say, like Davis Island did this last week, it doesn't meet the code. Be consistent. They'll have the information and the tools and resources to be successful when they walk up there, so that the next time they go up there, they feel like they're heard and they feel like their opinion matters. And so what's important is we invest in that area so that we can give them the tools and resources to be successful when they go there, and City Council will respect them when they go up there.
So one of the, the, the great opportunities I had, uh, years ago was to do the Mayor's Neighborhood University. I'm sure if you're familiar or not, they're a variety of neighborhood association presidents in the room. Uh, what it is, it's a module, uh, that sort of takes you through what it is to be a citizen in the city, in the various areas of the city. Police Department, Fire, City Council, that was great, because it had a variety of folks from the city coming to us. So I kind of knew who some of those folks were. Uh, we're up here asking for your vote and for your support. Um, I think it's important that you hear from us not just while we're campaigning, but also after this is over and someone gets elected. Uh, it's important that each one of these candidates, if they're elected, visits your neighborhood association, understands the issues that are important to you, and that a lot of these issues emanate from associations. And so if we have a relationship that we claim that we do with the various associations throughout the city, um, you should feel welcome and accept it. Uh, when you're standing up there, it's important that we listen to you and not scurry through Robert's Rules of Order and have staff make all the decisions, uh, but they're actually listening, they're asking great questions, and that we follow up with you afterwards to make sure that you're heard. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't want to dwell on the past, um, but I have sat through thousands of various review, reviews and thousands of rezonings. And I always pride myself on empowering the people who come in front of us. People like Vicki, people like Jerry, people like Marla. Because when they come in front of us, they... Because when they come in front of us at the council, it's critical that we listen. Not only that we listen, but what I did was I empowered them to take them beyond their three minutes. And yes, the code says that individual person gets three minutes. And a lot of times it doesn't seem fair because that attorney who just spoke for 30 minutes and then they get another 15-minute rebuttal, that doesn't seem fair. Okay? And sometimes it's not. But what I did was I empowered those individuals by asking questions. I'd say, Vicki, you've talked to us about the tree issue. Tell us a little bit more. You've talked to us about the noise issue, which is Howard Avenue is two blocks from her house. She knows the noise issue. You've talked to us about, about flooding and traffic and those types of things. Tell us more because that way when she explains the, the issue, she has a little more time, a little more depth to explain it to City Council. Then council has the ability to make intelligent decisions that are legally defensible.
John, if you could pass that microphone down to the end to Walter Smith because as, after our District Two candidates conclude with this question, we'll start with our one-minute closing statements and we'll begin with you, Mr. Smith, when we get to that point. So Joe Robinson, District Two, we're going to start with you on this question. How can you ensure transportation dollars are used throughout Tampa and not just in downtown?
That's because that's one of the major issues in my campaign, equity within the city budget. That's number one. Neighborhoods have not been getting equity in the city budget. This is new found money and it needs to be audited. It needs to be tracked in the most neediest neighborhoods and the most areas that are unsafe because a lot of the transportation issues need to be saved. They were asking me last night on Channel Eight about the Red Light camera and I told them it's been proven it's not necessarily safe. So what I would do is make sure that the money is audited, make sure that it goes to the neediest neighborhoods and make sure that we listen to the people out in the audience here that have come to City Council asking for those projects to be done. And as an engineer, I would make sure that I provide a listening ear, civility and fairness to everyone and make sure I use my professional experience to make sure I make good judgment and good decisions for the citizens of Tampa.
As you well know, back in the Tribune, certain business, they call me the hawk because I watch every dollar spent. Transportation has to be for everybody. However, we have changed our way of living. Years back, we didn't have anything. We had one thing we always wanted. You know what it was? A key. It was considered freedom. And now freedom is taken over and there's so many cars in the street that freedom no longer worked the way it should work. So we have to go back and have another mode of transportation. Buses should be one and no entity, no matter how rich and how wealthy and what you have, can have more than anyone in the neighborhood. I lived and came here, my father was an immigrant, everybody was pretty the same. And I lived in a place called the condominium. You know what it was? Tampa Housing Authority. And I enjoyed it. I had a bus, number three, I had a bus, number four. I rode the bus because that's all we had. Now we have a lot more. And what we need now is a same bus to come back to take it from point A to point B.
I really like this question. It's, it's one that I frequently hit when you go to East Tampa, West Tampa, North Tampa, but it has a different spin on it. When you go to those other neighborhoods, a lot of them are saying, ask, how can we make sure that all the money doesn't just go to South Tampa? So, you know, it's, it's a different approach and what, what I've had to explain to them is right now, it's not that it's all going to South Tampa, that they're, that South Tampa's getting all the pie, it's that there's no pie. And the reason why there's no pie is because we've had 26 years of irresponsible fiscal management. Things like in 1996, we took out a $20 million loan and that $20 million loan accrued interest over 20 years. We weren't able to make any payments over it during that time and now we owe $100 million. So we need better fiscal stewards of our money, but we also need more transparency. So as far as this new money that we have coming in, what we need to be doing is having that project-by-project breakdown of those funds and a region-by-region breakdown and have it be readily available to everyone and have that distributed thoroughly through social media. And that's what I hope to do. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. I said this at the mayoral forum and I said I wasn't going to say a lot tonight, but I will say this to you. If you drive down my street in South Tampa, I guarantee you will see not all of the money is coming here for infrastructure improvements. They asked me to be here and I got to do it six times in a row. Maybe one of these years I'll get my street paved. All right. So we're going to have our closing statements now. I really want to thank the candidates here because you adhere really well to the time. And it's a remarkable thing to hear from all of you. As a reporter, I would love the opportunity to ask some follow-up questions. Perhaps when you're on City Council, I will get that chance. So we're going to start down there with Mr. Smith and we're going to work our way up here to Bill Carlson and then we'll start on the second row, Viva, and work our way down. And we will conclude our closing statements here with John. Each of you gets one minute. Thank you.
Everybody said we are one. We are one. It's critical for us to understand that we have to work together to make certain that we have a more sustainable city, that our communities are connected appropriately, and that we are doing bottom-up representation of our communities. That is very critical. We must not have trickle-down determinations of what will happen in your community or through the city. When you have trickle-down determinations that are made, you get pushback. I witnessed it for 18 years. For 18 years, I've worked throughout the city of Tampa. For 18 years, I've written curriculum that determined somebody's future and actually trained people, hundreds, to go into jobs that we know will come into this city. For 18 years, I've worked in the trenches. For 18 years, I've worked in government. And now I want to take all that experience and work with you and for you. My name is Walter Smith II. I'm asking for your vote. Go to WalterForTampa.com, find out more about me. Thank you very much and remember, we are one.
As I told you earlier, I'm a retired physician. For the tens of thousands of patients I treated, I had to listen, I had to earn trust and I had to serve, I had to solve problems. This is what I will do as your next City Councilman. And I want to make Tampa better for everybody. Thank you. Craig Newman.
All right. Thank you, David Lewis, District, City Council, District One. So we heard a lot of the same kind of common talking points tonight and we're talking very complex issues here that we only have a minute to kind of get out. So what I would challenge all of you is if there's somebody up here, definitely reach out to them and see if they would take a phone call or a coffee with you or even lunch. And with that being said as well is on the stage, you have a plethora of the next generations, generation of leaders that are willing to step up and start handling the issues that the 21st century is going to give us and finish out some of the problems we're currently facing that we haven't been able to resolve over the last 30 years. So for me, again, City Council is the voice of the community, is the voice of the community and I am here for the community. And we focus on family first, your home and your business and we move Tampa forward together. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming tonight. I'm running for a citywide seat, District One. People ask all the time, well, why are you running? Well, I'm running because I love the city of Tampa. And I don't just love the city of Tampa, I love the people of the city of Tampa. And there's nobody on the stage that will work harder than I will as your City Council person. There's nobody on the stage that will be as prepared when I enter the chambers. I will make sure that I do my homework and that I will represent you well. That's why Mayor Bob Buckhorn has endorsed me. That's why the BBA, the men and women that protect our community, our men and women in blue have endorsed me. Equality Florida has endorsed me. And if you go to my website, you'll see a whole bunch of other community leaders. But don't believe me, ask friends of mine that are in the audience about who I am. Kathy Bartolotti sitting back here, I've known for years and years and years, a community leader in West Tampa. I was, event Louis, NAACP president in the back, you can ask her about me. Lynn, you can ask about me. People that have known me for decades about what type of a person I am and what type of leadership that I'll bring to the city of Tampa. Thank you all. I appreciate your consideration. I appreciate your vote. If you like what you hear, grab a yard sign so I don't have to carry them home. And if my phone number is on the business cards up there, I'd be happy to take you up on David's invitation about having a cup of coffee or chatting about the issues that face Tampa. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jeff, for being here. Jeff and I are earthwriters together. We spend many a time walking down Bay Shore and down Seventh Avenue. My name is Joseph Citro. I am your candidate for Tampa City Council. The next four years are going to be tough years. We're going to have a new administration. We're going to definitely have four new City Council people. If we don't put the right people in council, we're going to waste four years. Please visit my website. My cellular phone number is right on this card that you have in front of you. I dare somebody to call it right now. Please. Visit my website. Let's put Tampa to work again, not only for the city, but for the citizens too. Ladies and gentlemen, please indulge me, I would be remiss. Ladies, could you please stand up for me? Oh, look at them. Ms. Melinda Fair, she's been a great help to my candidacy. And Ms. Ally Serrano, who has my heart, thank you for jumping into this candidacy. I, I do appreciate it. VoteForCitro.com, please go to my website, my cellular phone number, call me, let's talk.
Thank you again, South Tampa Forum, for having me. I really appreciate it. I would never have gotten this risk if I didn't think that we needed a change and that I didn't have something to offer you. I am standing here before you, asking for your vote to believe in me or I will work tirelessly for you. I will make everything that we want possible, but remember, when you make that decision on March 5th for a mayor, I want you to think that it's a mayor that is going to have a lot of power in this city. City Council is here, we all have great ideas, but the mayor still has the power. And we want to be able to move the city forward with a vision that's established and keep moving it forward. But again, look at the people here on the stage and who will work with the person that you elect for mayor and keep this city moving the way it needs to go. I am Wendy Pepe. You can email me, wendy@wendypepe.com. Thank you for your time tonight.
This morning, someone asked me what I was most proud of over the last four years on City Council. And that was working with the mayor on the $251 million stormwater capital improvement project. And what does that mean? The flooding at Henderson and Dale Mabry, the flooding at Dale Mabry and Neptune, Lobos and Kennedy and all throughout our city. I worked with the mayor for five months in 2016 and I had to commit $20 million in community investment tax money to this $251 million stormwater plan. What that means is that over the 30-year assessment of the stormwater plan, it saves taxpayers about $1 million a year without cutting any of the projects on the project list and finally addressing the flooding throughout the city of Tampa and especially in the hotspots that are in my district. I remember going to Price the King, flooding on Henderson and Dale Mabry. I remember when my father's business was at Neptune and Dale Mabry, flooding and watching cars stall out. The name of the Neptune project is Neptune Lagoon on the city documents, which goes to show you how ridiculous it is. But I'm proud to have worked with the mayor and get approval from three other council members to finally fix our flooding. And you see the construction at Estrella and West Shore and that's all part of that. And I'm sorry if you look around there, but we have to do this and get these things done. Thank you.
Time to wrap up in a minute. Thank you all so much for doing this. Thanks to the organizers and this was a tremendous amount of work. Just to give you the reasons why I'd be the right candidate for you, I do have a great deal of diversity of experience. Actually started my career as an arts executive, got the opportunity to do the stay-at-home South Tampa mom thing for a while, and now I'm in education raising money for Hillsborough Community College for our amazing students. So a diversity of, of background. I also work very hard in the area of human trafficking, finding that crime. So I have a great deal of diversity of experience, but again, thinking about what to say at times like this, this isn't about me. It's not about any of us up here on this stage, it's about you. We, at Hillsborough Community College, we have a campus that the motto is you are the college or you are the city. And I think that when you're looking at who you want to choose to be in this district particularly, you need to make sure that it's someone that you trust and make the right decisions. And you also need to make sure that your City Council reflects who you are and what you look like. Thanks.
I'm Sal Verder Jr., running for Tampa City Council, District Four. Once again, I actually want to take this time to thank Marlin and all the different neighborhood associations that came together to put this on. As the Vice President of Palmasia Neighborhood Association, I know how important this election is to, to all the neighborhood associations out there, which is why I want to challenge you not only to go out on March 5th to vote, but tell a neighbor, a friend, a relative and try to get as many people out to vote on March 5th as possible so we could get the true where the people and where the true South Tampa wants Tampa to head to. If you remember one thing about me, please know that I'm very passionate about my hometown of Tampa. For five generations, Tampa's given so much to my family and led us to live the American dream. And it's time for me to step up and give back. I'm very passionate. I have a young, fresh voice, I have fresh ideas, which is why I'm asking for your vote to have those fresh ideas presented in City Council. Once again, I'm Sal Verder Jr., running for Tampa City Council, District Four. Thank you everyone for coming out.
So over the last eight years, the downtown in Tampa has done really well and the economy has done really well. But as I speak to most neighborhood leaders, they say that they feel like the neighborhood associations and the neighborhoods have been neglected. You hear up here that all of us are in favor of advocating for the neighborhoods and the good news is that all the mayoral candidates are going to advocate for the neighborhoods. So what I think you really need is somebody who's going to take action. And I'm not elected yet, I've never been elected, but I was, as I was walking the streets, walking, knocking on doors, I met a lady who said, the people are speeding down my street, which is a problem I think in almost every neighborhood, by the way. And she said, I just need a stop sign. So I picked up the phone and called here Coleman, who's in the seat now, and said, can you please talk to somebody about this? Which is our right as a citizen to call our elected officials. As I was talking to Palmasia Neighborhood Association, they said, we still can't get the polls moved on, on Bay to Bay. So I picked up the phone and called TCO and said, what's going on? And started a dialogue between the two. I'm somebody who takes action, but as the Tampa Bay Times said in their endorsement, I also am somebody with a big vision who cares about a lot of big issues for this area as well. Bill Carlson, District Four.
Thank you everyone for this opportunity, but I must really be honest with you, talk is cheap. We, you, you have an opportunity to change. Your voice, your vote is power. And I ask you to vote for someone different, someone who has experience in transportation, who has created and implemented a successful transit system and who wants to bring that to the city to connect our neighborhoods and not divide us. Someone who's been a public safety advocate for years for promoting our children, our seniors and our disabled community. Someone who has been in technology, who wants to bring technology-driven jobs and green jobs to the city. Vote different. If you want the same, then vote the same and you will get the same challenges another four years from now because that is the truth. If you want change, then vote for me and I will bring you that change. Vote Viva, vote early, vote March 5th.
I don't know how I followed up, Viva. So I just want to say thank you. Tonight is a very good example of the 23 neighborhood associations coming together and what strong and powerful neighborhood associations can do for their community. I've harped on that. You've heard me talk about strengthening and powering our neighborhood associations. And I want to do that because I care about our neighborhoods. I care about you and how we can fix our issues today. And I care about, let me get a little shot here, my little girl Millie, we didn't cry the entire time today. So I just, you know, I really care about making Tampa better and moving Tampa forward. And I know that we can do that by strengthening our neighborhood associations, fixing our infrastructure that plagues every neighborhood across the city. And with my experience on the Budget Advisory Committee, I know that we can accomplish these goals through sound fiscal policy. I hope I'll see you when I knock on your doors, but I don't. This Sunday at Panera Russica down in McDill, we have what I call Coffee Community and Conversation. It's an opportunity to come meet me and talk about the issues that are important to you so that I can be a better advocate for you when I'm elected to City Council. Please look Steven Leidl on March 5th. Thank you guys so much. Let's move Tampa forward.
Thank you again to South Tampa for putting this very important forum together for us to talk about our vision. I appreciate you being here. Nicholas Glover, again, you can visit our website at votenicolasglover.com for more information about the campaign and about our platform and the event that we did get to answer some of the questions this evening. In addition to running for this office on the issues of transportation, housing and education, also wanted to address one of the points that's been brought up a couple times, which is that we have a strong mayor form of government. That is definitely true. And while we have a strong mayor form of government, what I want you to realize is that that doesn't mean that we have to have a weak council. The council is the closest to the neighborhoods and to the people. So you all should get very familiar with us, even more important, we should be familiar with you, coming to you often, soliciting your input, making sure that we understand the issues that are important to you. So for me, it's about making sure that we are proactive as councilmen and women. And so if elected, you will have my support in doing that.
Uh, so in addition to transportation, housing, education, also concerned with making sure that our neighborhoods are strong and that every single neighborhood feels included in this process. And then ultimately, everyone shares in the prosperity of the city of Tampa. Thank you so much.
So we got asked a lot of questions tonight, and I ask you a question. Does experience count? That's what it says on my sign. Experience does count. When I look out at the audience and I see my friend Jim Stephan, I see my friend Mary Bryant. They gave decades and decades of their service to the city. They didn't just start at the top. Jim Stephan ended up being Budget Director. He didn't start there, okay? He learned, he grew, and with that experience, he became better and better and more competent. Well, that's what I've done as your City Councilman from 2003 to 2010. I came across this quote the other day about experience. It says, "Experience gives you the wisdom and insight to carry out your vision for the future." I have a tremendous vision for the future. I know people are coming, and I know where we need to put them. We need to put them downtown, we need to put them Chelmside, and we don't need to put them up and down South Tampa and on Dale Mabry. Ray Sherman came to me back when they were doing the Complain Amendment, and he said, "We need to line Dale Mabry with high-rises and six-plexes" and that sort of thing. And I said, "No, sir." I said, "We need to put those new people downtown, Ebor, Chelmside, over there." And that's what I'll continue to do. I protected neighborhoods for eight years. You vote me, John Dinkoff, or your voting experience. And I appreciate your vote, and I'll make you proud. Thank you.
I'm Joe Robinson, and I'm asking for your vote and support. I'm a businessman, I'm a father, I have a daughter that's 31-years-old. I worked at NAACP as Second Vice President. I've worked with the West Tampa CAC. I served on various forces in the 1980s. I know what City Hall is. I'm not a career politician, and I believe in giving back. I believe that it's time now with the infrastructure issues, much as you have down the street, the sewer pumping needs to be revitalized at $8 million. Right down the street, y'all from Hillsborough. I want to make sure that happens. So I need your vote, I need your support. I'm a person that listens, I listen to, be civil, and I will work with you in the community. You can ask anyone about Joe Robinson, I will get to nassy. I will go after it, and I will get it done. All I need is to be able to get on City Council and to show it. And I ask for your vote, and I ask for your support, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I'm Charlie Miranda, President, City Council Member, District Two, and going for reelection. There's something that's been said that I have to correct. I have never served 26 years. I've served 25 with this one. So I want to correct that record. But let me say this. When you look at the city and you look at what the finances are under the old administration, I proposed to her a health clinic, and she put one on a year after. For the last 12 years, because of higher cost of insurance, you well know how health insurance is, we have saved $1 million a year because of that health clinic solving the problem before they happen. I also do not pay. Every council member elected is entitled $300 a month Sipit money. I have never taken $1 out of that money.